What?
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 She said, "Why?"
See, that's why.
Jesus.
I said, "Jesus."
Yeah.
She said, "Why?"
Pretty proud.
No, this is Chris. Uh, she's at the town hall. Yeah. Something wrong?
This can't do it.
Okay, I'll let her know.
See, but there's one thing about it. I got room for it. Yep.
Okay, I'll let her know. Okay. Okay.
Who?
Uh, Terry's going to take, yeah. Thursday.
Well, I don't mean to go out here.
Uh, I'm just.
Absolutely.
Sunny.
Was it sunny here?
My boss is trying to get her ticket.
Yeah, you got some on back. Tifo on this side of my.
Oh, I've never heard that.
Who even are you?
I'm not here.
Girl, won't you?
That'd be good.
Did you make it call one seat?
Look at him, he's got muscles and everything.
Oh, wow.
He's trying to just act a little bit, he hit me right.
Yeah.
Now, he got those muscles, look at him.
I worked for steak during the week.
It's like that table muscle is the one that works the hardest.
Yeah, I gotta sit down now.
Mom and dad, huh?
I'm gonna get in a minute. Lay these out, that way I don't have to back up. Back up. Yep. Well, I say it that way, I won't have to get back up, but you probably will. Hit my nose.
Let me tell y'all about my home. Okay, well, let's get on with it. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four Town and Pound Regular Session of Council. Um, I'll now call this meeting to order. Uh, if everyone would please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. And Randy, would you please open something for our chair?
Yes. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for another day of life, for your blessing of life for the winter of this Christmas season. Thank you for that baby that was born in a manger, but he's not in a manger tonight. He raised up and he went to a cross and he died for our sins, past present and future soon. Lord, we thank you so much. And he rose from that grave and he's coming back soon. And I pray that everybody be ready when that time comes. Well, bless everything that's done tonight. Lord, be in our midst, be in our presence, and every good thing comes from you. Let us never forget that. We love you and praise you, Lord, in Jesus' precious name. Praise you.
Amen. Gotcha. Can you hurry to give us a roll call for it? Adams is absent. Cantrell?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Mullins?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Okay. We have a forum. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as it stands?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. He's waiting on me to add something.
Yes, I was.
I'll stick at that motion.
All in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed? And anyone abstaining? Okay?
One thing I'd like to add to that, I were ahead of list reports. There is no, um, coming airport commission meeting in December, and they'd like to thank the town for their support and their donation.
So that'll move us down to reports. Uh, first up is the police department.
You didn't even count, doesn't everybody know it? So the only out of the business to really report to you, can you, everybody hear me okay? Uh, is that, uh, the IT fellow will be here tomorrow to do our, uh, manage our equipment, put everything into place, and get the new part of computers working properly. And we, uh, we'll look at this, uh, fire one, the fire one as well. Uh, should be seeing two new police officers out on the street soon. Contingent upon their background, come back successful and everything working out. There's been a lot of complaints about parking situation on sidewalks of town. I've had the opportunity to re, to address that for several residents, and so far we've maintained pretty good compliance. Uh, just wanted to let everyone know that we will be out forcing that, uh, in the near future. And we've had a lot of complaints about, uh, stop sign violations. And, uh, there was a complaint published about a school bus being stopped on Main Street. So no problem being addressed. I want to bring up speed in that in case y'all haven't heard anything about it. Uh, I realize that, uh, tonight will be the last meeting, but, uh, we'll all meet together. So on behalf of myself, the police department, the town pound, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service to your community. And, uh, while we haven't always agreed on everything, I think we function pretty well as a team, and I commend you all for that. Each one of you have been attacked out here on social media by cowardly keyboard warriors who want to sit at the house and spout lies. Uh, I have been a part of that myself because last December in this chamber, this council called my name out and violated my rights by calling my name out in a disciplinary manner. And this person, once the person proceeded to go on Facebook and tell a lie about me. And I just want everybody to know that, uh, that's not going to be tolerated any longer. Uh, I know that, so what I'm about to say, I can say that it's not casting stones at anybody because I'm as guilty as anybody else in this chamber for doing what I'm getting ready to say. In the spirit of good nature and cooperation, I decided not to do anything about that. I decided to allow this individual to continue to perpetuate their lives. Um, I've seen lies spread about each one of you. I don't appreciate them. And as far as the conduct in this chamber goes, uh, Mayor, kudos to you for what you've done. You brought, you brought honor and integrity and professionalism back to this chamber because there was none before you got here. And I hope that your successor will take a page out of your book and conduct business the way you conduct the business. I appreciate you for that. And I'm sorry for the lies and the deceitful tactics that's been utilized, utilized against you. It's not fair, but we know one who's in complete control that will have a final say. Um, there was another issue that got brought up, reported to me, that there was an incident of disorderly conduct here at the town hall in the front office. So I've spoken with Ms. Kennedy and advised the front office staff not to have members of the general public, you know, in that office. Business can be kept at the window, and that's for the safety of the employees as well as the, uh, you guys when you're here. Um, you know, in this life, there's a lot of people who will wear this uniform and hide behind a badge to do things that's not right. And there's two sides in this world, there's good and there's evil. And I have made decisions in the past based on information I had at hand that were not right decisions. That wasn't something I did to be underhanded anyone or to, or to do wrong. And for that, I'm truly sorry. Um, there's people that will hide behind the cloth to obtain an agenda and perpetuate these lies and put these things out so that people can continue to roll with these lies. And before anybody accuses me of being on the side, yeah, I'm on the side, I'm on the side of good, I'm on the side of right. And, uh, when it comes to the performance of my duties, I'll always perform those impartially, to the very best of my ability. But I didn't choose the side of wrong. And I appreciate each and every one of you for your dedicated public service. And what I've seen you do over the course of the last four years, because this place was an absolute, it was a wreck. And if it hadn't been for your all's free labor and dedication, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I commend each and every one of you, thank you for your service. And if there's ever anything I can do to assist you, please let me know. One thing I did want to say before we get started, I've given y'all a guide, a law enforcement reference guide for public meetings. In the event that we have public speakers in the future, we certainly don't want to go back to what we had in the previous council. If you want to, the last page, second page is practical wisdom for officers. At the bottom of that, uh, particular page, it says, "Speech that is not protected." So someone comes up here and interrupts another speaker, they're being disordered, and that's going to be dealt with. If they come up here and they incite people to lawlessness, that's a violation of the code. If they use biting words or vulgarities, or if they threaten anyone, true or actual, if they make definitive statements that identify a victim by naming them or directly implicating them, that's disorderly conduct, and they will be arrested or harassed. So I thank you, Mayor, for the way you conduct your business. It's been an honor and privilege to serve with you. I wish you the best, I know you'll be around, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you all.
Next, we have the fire department.
That's business as usual. Uh, one thing I'd like to do is I know that we've got some individuals coming on that would like to see our charter revoked. And what I'd like to ask for on the council, I'd like to make a motion that all pound volunteer fire department equipment, property, which is the building, the property it sits on, vehicles, equipment, checking accounts and everything, be turned over to the town volunteer fire department incorporated once we have a five oh one C three corporation status established. That way, if something does happen to our charter and we, the town no longer has it, we will have fire protection for our citizens. And that's in the form of a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
It'll be roll call, please.
Sure.
I, I would like to have some discussion today. And Lynn, I don't want you to feel like that's not something I'm willing to do. I don't feel like now is the time to do it. That's just my opinion, my feeling on it. Do I feel like if something is going to happen to the charter that we need to do something, I do? I, I just don't think at this point we need to do it here. That's just my opinion.
Do you want to carry on with the vote?
My motion stays.
Okay. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mullins?
Cannot do it undecided. Uh, no.
Tyler?
Yes.
Get out.
No. Can you take it?
No, I'm worried. Um, I, I vote yes.
May you do say that that motion?
Ms. Tyler?
I'm not sure.
Okay, that motion carries. Um, next is the town manager report. Um, I'd like to extend my heartfelt thank you to everybody who helped with the Christmas parade. I think this year was, it went, everything went so smoothly, uh, and it, and it was just really wonderful. We all had a wonderful time, and I'd really like to extend a, a thank you to Charlene and the Lions Club for helping make treat bags. Um, our first place winner in the float was, uh, Mount Comprehensive Health Corporation. Second place was Sexton's, um, that's not Sexton's Floral, it's actually a different company out of Whitesburg. And then third was Mount Olive Church, um, and they have all been sent, um, their, their prize money. We also submitted our ARC, um, grant application on the ninth. And we also had a River Walk meeting on the twelfth. Um, that is, that was really nice. We had a few, few people out, and I was six, but, but everybody, um, it seemed to be a pretty successful meeting, so. Next is the EDA.
We're still in the process of getting the insurance. I think now we just have to have a couple of pictures of, of the home and, uh, someone, an engineer look at it, and then we can purchase insurance. And hopefully, we hope to maybe try to see if we can get some grants to help with everything that we need because it does need some repair in the basement. That's all? We have about thirty-five hundred still in the bank.
Next is the planning commission.
We did not have a planning commission meeting this month, um, just due to the holiday. Last month, our chair ended up, I think, at a funeral and didn't make it, so we did not have a plan.
Great, great.
Okay. Um, next is our audience comment time. Um, each person, uh, that has a comment, if you'll please step to the podium and state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to make your statement known.
Angela Barnett, one one five two nine Lead Fork Road, Pound, Virginia. I'm not in the corporation, but I just wanted to extend, um, my thoughts to you all because we are, we are where we're at because of you all. And I think that y'all have done an outstanding job. Um, I completely agree with Chris on what he said, and I appreciate you, Chris, and Cindy, for the job that you all have done. I appreciate everyone of you so much because, like I say, we were, we were in a bad shape before, but you all have brought us to this point, and I thank you, I think each one of y'all be commended, and I appreciate you. My other comment is, it was my understanding that the bank building was supposed to been started on at the end of November, and I just haven't noticed any work being done on that. I just wanted to update on the old bank building.
We are going to give an update on that, Angie, when we get to the grant.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Well, I wish you all a Merry Christmas, and y'all have done great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for a public comment? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the grants section.
Um, so I, I handed you all a funding summary, and this deals with Church Street, um, deals with VDM, Amware, DEQ, and we do have Paul here at the segment if anybody has any questions about that funding summary. There is a match portion of the VDM for, um, Church Street. So, you know, we have an allotment there for the match. Um, we do have a reimbursement that I'll be coming back to us with the first part of it, hopefully very shortly. Heaven knows how quickly the government works. The only thing I would do with that is, is make the motion that we proceed with the budget and the work as laid out in this synopsis.
Okay. All in favor? Uh, anyone abstaining? Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
All right, so to go into a little more detail, the DEQ grant is what is getting that bank building down, and it is not on the list, but it, it's, that's all of Church Street. Um, we've had to wait on a structural engineer, and we do have them coming tomorrow to look at the, the bank building. So once we've got the report from the structural engineer, then we'll be able to move forward. Um, from the monuments grant standpoint, um, we are proceeding with that. I believe January, we should have two proposals of the design from the artists, uh, to be chosen from. The art rating grant was a capacity building grant. So let me go back to the, the bank building just a minute. So if, if everything works smoothly and we know nothing has up to this point, um, my hope is that they can start tearing it down by January sixth. That's going to depend on the contractor and what their schedule looks like, but that, that's my hope. So the art ready is a capacity building grant for fifty thousand dollars. It's spread over a two-year time period, and that grant has been laid out to pay for, um, an employee. Uh, we did hire a intern that we hope to develop into a clerk treasurer for the town. Um, so, you know, hopefully that will pay for her over the next two years, or at least the majority of it. The bad buildings we have, uh, VDM goes back to the whole Church Street thing. Bad buildings, we have a tentative date of January the twenty-third to get the final report out on that. And if for some reason the twenty-third, if we get snow or whatever, something happens, we can't have it on that date, we have January thirtieth as the backup, but we will post that. The Riverwalk project, I'm sure everyone's seen that in the paper. This is a project that was, the original plans were in two thousand and one. And so App Voices has been seeking funding for us, um, to help with that project. We did have a community listening session on Thursday. Um, we had approximately, I'm going to say fifteen people out that evening, uh, to provide input. So at this point, the engineer and the designers, the, oh, shoot.
Land's End Park, too.
Thank you, thank you. It's in their hands, and they will come back, I think we're looking at March, maybe?
We'll have initial concepts in March.
So hopefully we'll have a plan to go further with that. So the last thing on that list is heat pumps and settler. So Kara?
Yeah.
If I get something wrong, you correct me.
Okay.
So in a discussion with App Voices, the question was that, we started talking about settler, and then the question was asked, "So how old are your heat pumps?" So I've sent the information to, um, a couple of the gentlemen at App Voices, they're going to look at that. They do have a program right now that could replace our heat pumps free of charge to the town. In addition to that, there is a solar program, is it AEP that does this? Through AEP, um, for municipalities that could power all of the town's buildings, um, the streetlights through a solar project. Uh, there was a lot of things that were, were kind of touched on, but those aren't commitments, so I would hesitate to put those out right now, but it's certainly something we're looking, we can look into. Um, they did say that nobody's participating in that program with AEP because most, nobody knows about it, but they're looking for somebody to pilot it. I think we would be a fabulous place to pilot that. And if it's going to save us some money, I mean, we're looking at around twenty-four hundred dollars a month on the streetlights alone. Um, the power deal for the town hall this month was a thousand dollars, and that's with us cutting the heat back. So, you know, I've seen it higher than that. Would I like to see it lower? Absolutely. And where we can save a dollar, we want to save a dollar. So that's something that I feel like we need to explore, and if, if we get to be that pilot group, then we take it and be happy about it.
Um, next on the agenda is the architecture opportunities. Um, there should be, and, um, um, so we've been afforded a couple of, um, architectural opportunities. First one is with Hannah Gross. She is, um, with the University of Maryland, and she has decided to do.
Can I, can I also get a, a?
Okay.
Sorry, I'm bringing the coffee down there, but.
Okay, yeah. Well, I, yeah, I must have missed it. I printed them all, but.
You just want my to get up here.
Well, it's good for us.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. She didn't want to get it. I know, I know, you all are just being so rude to me. Well. Yeah, that was supposed to be in the brackets. I don't know how we missed it.
So again, the first opportunity is with Hannah Gross. She is with the University of Maryland, and she has chosen the town of Powne to do her thesis on. This will allow her to do some mockups for us for free. It'll give us some ideas of things that we can maybe repurpose or rebuild on in the town. She is not licensed, she's not licensed as of yet, so we would, anything that she draws or does for the town would have to be reviewed and come by a licensed architect. But I think it's a good opportunity for us and her. The second is through Virginia Tech with Kevin Jones, and that's, that's these little blurbs here. This is, this goes into a little bit more detail about what that would entail. We are slated for spring of 2026 to be part of his architectural classes. I don't really know if I should call it a work study or.
It's listed as Appalachian Futures Labs, and they come out and very similarly do mockups of different buildings. They kind of have to limit what they work on, and they'll have it in groups. If anybody's interested in seeing one of these papers, I can make some additional copies of it. But that was, you know, that's a huge opportunity for them to choose us. For 2024, they chose Pocahontas, and there's actually some videos available of what they did there.
There is first in 2010, so they're doing that right now, or in the fall, they did that in the fall.
But it's, it's just, it's a beautiful thing, in my opinion. You know, anytime somebody is offering us up some free help, some free information, I take it this will be in.
Okay, next is building repair. So we've talked to several different people who have said that our building repair is out of their scope of service. However, Glisenberry has not said that it's out of their scope of service, but they do require that a structural engineer come in and take a look and provide a report before they commit to an actual quote. So tomorrow, hopefully, take full advantage of the structural engineer already being here for the bank building and have him come out to the town hall to address all the issues with this building.
Yeah, we give it two for, so I would make the motion to approve the cost for the structural engineer to look at the town hall, as that's what the building inspector and contractor have requested.
Do you have a second?
$125 a month, just to give you that little piece of information. Little extra. Well, it is, but it's going to save us on travel and such, since he's going to be here anyway. So we take the two for. I'll say yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is Mitchell Fleming.
I don't see Mr. Fleming here.
I don't think he's here. Great, so I guess we'll move on down to the organizational meeting.
So what we have done in the past is had that on the same night that we have our council meeting, which would be January 21st. I would make the motion that the organizational meeting be scheduled for January the 21st at 6:30 PM prior to the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, motion carries. Next is the legislative breakfast.
Was that in there? So last year, we participated in a legislative breakfast at Avondale. Yep, we went last year. So they're, they are doing that again this year. It was a good opportunity to speak with some of the legislators. And last year, the case was, it was very helpful with MCHC, yeah, and them coming in. So I would make the motion that we send two people. And that motion would also entail one current, one remaining council member and one from the new group coming in.
Okay, do we have a second?
That's very good.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay, that motion carries.
I, I would make the suggestion that we just draw out of the hat for that. That way there's no favoritism, there's no, this one is going and I can't, because they didn't want me to go, we just draw out of the hat and be done.
I may, the chairman, we may not be able to go, but then they eliminate money, and worse.
I believe it's January 3rd in Avondale. Hang on, I can tell. It is January 3rd. It is at the, I believe it's the Higher Education Center in Avondale. It's on the campus of the, whatever the college is.
Virginia Howes.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe one of these retired gentlemen would like to, I just.
It's a breakfast, not one, at the Kennedy, it's a breakfast meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it is early in, in the morning. If I remember right, the fee is like $20 per person.
Hey, boys, too. We'll eat breakfast.
You'll eat breakfast?
I guess it's you, Landon.
You can volunteer.
Really?
Volunteer.
Come get broken right here.
Are you going to be able to go?
In the morning. 3rd, it's a weekday, isn't it? You can go, can't you?
I can go. Okay.
I can't, sorry.
So we have a date, Landon.
Yeah. It was very.
It, it was, I mean, they, they do put out some information at that breakfast. There's a lot of, well, not a lot, but there, there's a few dignitaries. There's a few business people there that do presentations. It, it's, it's not, it's one of those things you probably want to take a nap at. However, I'm a networking person, so, you know, I don't care to talk to the legislators, so if somebody wants something, now's the time to say, you need to corner so-and-so and ask for it.
Yeah.
Corner off, we want it off.
We want, we want it back, you know.
And more.
Okay, next is the audits.
The bane of our existence. So we are still working to get the audits done. There is a grant application in to, to pay for our audits. And, and right now, we're just waiting for David Cox and Robinson Cox and Farmer to coordinate a date to make sure the pre-audit can be done and ready for the auditors when they're ready to do the actual audit. We don't need closed session.
Okay.
Make that closed session off there. No closed session.
And before anyone makes a motion to adjourn, I would just like to thank everyone for the opportunity to have been here and to serve. I have learned so much, and I have really enjoyed being with you all. I would just like to say thank you to, to each one of you for everything that you have done for the town and for everything that you continue to do. Even if it's not said enough, it is very appreciated. And I've just really enjoyed you all. I, I really have. I love you all, you all are family, you can't get rid of it. My baby loves you all, so you're stuck with us.
Because she's such a good kid.
Yeah, yeah, you're stuck with us. So I just wanted to tell you all that I do love you and that I appreciate you, even heaven. I do love you all very much.
We have, you know, we love you too, and we appreciate everything we've done.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
You've been great.
So that's all.
I just wondered if Karen and Glenn wanted to.
Well, I have, I've learned a lot in the time that I have been on council. I've learned, I've cried, I've prayed, and.
We've liked a lot.
Yeah, we have liked a lot. And I did not know how much volunteering means to this town. This town, we don't, I mean, it's like everybody just washed their hands on it. But this town has a lot to offer. It's just taking time to get where we are. And I want to thank Laverne, and Brittany, and Doris, and Glenn.
Even Glenn.
For having confidence in me that I could do it. And I just thank them so much. And I want to encourage everyone, you know, you need, you need to come to the council meetings. You have so much information. Instead of sitting at home making accusations against someone that is actually working their butt off, but yet they get no thank yous. All they get is the slander and the lies. So I want to encourage everyone to just, if you see your, your neighbor, your friend, encourage them to come to these meetings. This is where you get your information, and you get correct information. But I just, I'm so thankful that I was given the opportunity to serve on this council and to help the town of Powne.
All right, Glenn, don't make us cry.
Now, I've enjoyed serving on council. I was involved in the whole rigmarole four years ago. I didn't turn, tell, and run. I stayed right here, stayed in the fight. I will continue to stay in the fight. Dedicated my life to this town, over 38 years with the fire department, and continue serving that, have been on and off the rescue squad for about that much. Served on the council, we enjoyed it. We've had some knockdown dragouts, but the town's still here, and I hope it continues to stay here. I've enjoyed working with these ladies up here. Whenever they first come in, we had a little tip together, but we, we come together and we look for the betterment of the town, and that's what we done.
It's just because we let you wear a dress. It's because we kind of like you, a little Disney on the bin too, we just had to teach you.
Yeah, but it's, it's been a trip. And like I say, I will still be here fighting for the town and doing what I can. You're not getting rid of me, I will, I will continue to do what I'm doing.
Great.
Great, great.
One more thing. We are blessed and lucky to not only have Karen, but I do think that we need to say a big thank you to our biggest cheerleader, Jimmy. You're just you, and we love you.
I just speak for what I say and thank you for what I think of it.
No, it's not about what you say, Jimmy, it's about what you do. It's about what you do, about what you do. You know, sometimes what you say.
I bend over backwards.
Absolutely, don't you? You don't have some Christmas decorations to take down, so.
Well, that's one good thing.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Reluctantly.
Anyone abstain? Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.
I learned how to pause it in my last meeting, I learned how to pause it. On the last one, I learned how to use this thing. You know what?
Did, did anybody want to put a copy of this futures lab?
Saying you so much.
And you know what? I learned to use it on my last meeting, I learned how to pause it.